Yeah, I was wondering if I could get a copy of the five-year plan that Mr. French talked about in this little recession.
Uh, yes. Um, I will email that to you. Does that work?
Yep.
Yep. Um, any announcements? And then let's start with you, Molly.
Alright, so I didn't bring the manifest because I didn't come to the office today. So I will bring them next time. Um, but did in included in your pack is the current year financial. Um, there really wasn't much change since the last time you saw this. Um, we did in all the districts really take a hard look at food service.
Mm-hmm.
So we did update the loss a little bit more, but I've, I don't think it's gonna be that much because we are getting a little bit more assistance with the supply chain. Um, it's not grants, but like supply chain, it's almost um, like relief money to help with the increased cost of food.
Oh, okay.
So I just don't know how much more we're gonna get, so I did increase the loss a little bit more, but I, my gut tells me it's not gonna be that.
Okay.
Um, so we just had a little bit more of, um, we did reserve the nature's classroom for the fifth grade trip. Um, that was put in here. We adjusted some of the encumbrances for utilities and phone. Um, other than that, did anyone have any questions? We are asking all schools to kind of really think about year-end purchases, so stuff that we would typically buy a little bit later in the year. We are asking them to really think about that now because we're doing that software conversion and it's gonna be an April 1 conversion date. So I really want to have as much purchasing done before April 1, um, to make that transition smoother. So you might see a little bit more of the typical year-end stuff happen a little bit sooner.
Okay.
But other than that, um, I saw the ballots got proofed today.
Okay.
Um, so those got sent along for printing, um, and Michelle signed it as the clerk, so we're on our way for that as well.
Excellent. You guys have anything?
No, no questions on the budget rebound?
No, I'm fine.
Great.
Alright, approve.
About how long will be to the ballots will be in place? The only reason I'm asking is because we have people in Florida and they have to mail stuff back and forth. So, just a rough.
I, I, I don't know. So we use what's, it's LHS. I don't know if that stands for anything, but all of the districts use it. Um, and I know, for example, today I did the Kensington ones and I had to, because we didn't have Kensington clerk either. So luckily the two businesses, people one lives in East Kingston, one lives in Kensington, so we could do it. Um, and I do know on the order form that I submitted today, I had to list how many test ballots, how many, um, absentee and how many regular ones.
Okay.
So I'm just not sure when those come in, but we did send for those today. And I worked with Barbara Clark today for her to be able to work it.
Yeah, I talked to Barbara already. It's the people that, that aren't, don't have computers. You gotta mail from Florida up here just to get the, uh, declaration. Not even the ballot, it's just the declaration. It has to be, and then you have to send back ballots and the ballots have to come back here. So it's less than a month. It's, it's getting, you know, to the point where it's.
So I know LHS, they do send, uh, when, after they make the ballot template, they send it over to proof. And then I know that they had already done, East Kingston was, I think, before anybody else.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, um, approval of minutes, January 8th. You guys have anything? Nothing?
Um, well, I, I wasn't here.
Oh, that's right.
And I didn't watch the footage, so I did see like maybe a typo or two, but, um, yeah.
You caught it better than I did.
Yeah. One was just on a name. Which I think Ms. Dergan should be Ms. Durvan.
Durvan.
Unless we do have somebody from town named Ms. Dergan, but I wasn't here, so I'm not sure if it was her that spoke.
Both of them. Uh... I'm gonna go to that. Let's also burn it here.
And then the other thing that I saw as I was reading through is, was under Mr. Ron Morales's, uh, he had a few questions and he asked, uh, how many teacher roles are filled? And it had, the response looks like budgeted for nine, currently eight filled. And I thought that was a typo because we have nine teachers filled, yeah. Under, um, kind of under where we were before for Mrs. Durvan's comment.
Was that for classroom teachers or for paras? We have, we had nine budgeted paras and eight were filled.
I think that's actually.
Okay, so we'll just need to change, um, because this is saying referring to how many teacher roles are filled. So maybe that would just change to para roles. Maybe that was a question.
There we go. Say I remember that conversation and it was correct. But they were talking about paras.
Paras, okay, yeah.
Okay.
And then there was just Lisa Illinois question mark, one explanation of mentor salaries. See, there was a question mark. It looked like maybe she couldn't understand the last name when she was doing the minutes. She was talking about mentors and teacher stipend.
Let's see if we can track that down. But I don't know who that was.
Yeah. There is one public comment in here that I believe, um, that she, uh, didn't hear the name for the minutes and there was just a question mark in front of it. But I'm not seeing it now. But I was thinking maybe if we got the content, um, we would know who it was. Yeah.
If you see it later, just email Renee.
I will let you know, yeah. I'm not, um...
Okay.
Yeah, maybe that was the question mark I was talking about.
Alright, um, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for...
Before you do that, I read the draft a couple of weeks ago. I don't know what you've done to it. But I think I got up first at that meeting and I was the one that brought up the DEIJ. And I think when I read the draft, it was attributed to Mr. Lloyd.
Yep, yes. Yeah, that's at the beginning of this one.
It's at the very beginning, yes.
Yes.
So that comment was, um, to Mr. Branting and not Ted Lloyd? Under number two public.
Thank you.
I do ask a question about the mentors' salaries. But I don't know which meeting. I asked how they got paid, um, and it was after hours, but you know, they, they did the mentoring after hours, so they got paid for it. But I don't know if that's the same minute.
I think it was, I think it was the, it was.
I do too.
You say that, yeah.
Yeah. I think it was too.
Okay, so the Lisa Illinois comment is actually Nancy Parker?
Yeah.
Ah. Mystery solved.
Yeah, there was a good turnout, so there was a lot of speakers in this, in these minutes.
Alright. Uh, duh, duh, duh. Let's just go over this. Uh, the question about eight of nine, uh, positions filled, that should reference that it's for the par- paras. Um, the Lisa Illinois, that was actually Nancy Parker. And the very first comment was Dr. Branting, not Ted Lloyd.
Yep.
Alright.
Yep.
Like to make a motion to approve the January 8th minutes as amended.
Second?
All in favor? All abstaining? Alright. Okay. Next. Alright, Chair's report, superintendent evaluation, um, did you guys get a chance to look over the survey?
I looked at it.
Do you have any feedback?
360 evaluation to me. Pull that out. I, I looked at it. Am I supposed to fill it out also?
No, 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 just do you have, do you have any feedback? So, so that, that's gonna go, let me just, um... That is going to go to, uh, first of all, the superintendent evaluation, one of the things that we're doing is we're doing a three, what's called a 360 evaluation. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but basically it goes out to all of the people within the SAU system. Um, stakeholders, so people in the office, teachers, paras, et cetera, et cetera. To get a feel of how they are feeling, how the superintendent is doing. So not just the public, but also them. Um, and there's a number of reasons when it, um, one of it would be morale and so forth. And, you know, also do they feel that they're getting the support that they need to do their job, et cetera? Um, there's a survey that we're working on that, um, is gonna go out to them with regards to that, so that's what we're discussing. So.
That doesn't go out to, to average citizens?
There is a separate survey that will go out to the public, um, that is geared towards how the public is feeling, how everything is going. But this is very geared towards, you know, are you getting the resources that you need for do your job and so forth?
It's the employees who are, um, critiquing the effort they.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And so it's, it's an anonymous, it's gonna be an anonymous survey, so, um, come back, so.
Yeah, I think it's pretty expansive. I think it's very in-depth as far as like what we're looking for. So I did read this before the joint board meeting last month, and so I don't really think I have any further input on it.
Okay.
But I, I guess I maybe just learned now that we're gonna do the survey for the public. Maybe I didn't hear that before.
Yes, there is, there is gonna be another, another survey. And I think part of it actually went out. Look that up. No, that was a.
The communication survey?
Communication survey.
Yeah. So, uh, what would be the timeline on that? Like, it'll be a yearly evaluation and?
So yeah, this, this goes into the yearly superintendent evaluation.
Okay.
Um, that Melissa used to run.
Okay.
Um, and right now it's Allison is, is gonna be doing it.
Okay.
When these evaluations are completed, whether it's the school or the general population, what's the process of looking at what the results are and what we do about it?
Uh, it, first the superintendent, superintendent evaluation committee reviews, um, what comes back. That gets shared with the joint board. Also, there's a direct meeting with the superintendent to review, um, what is going on.
Does the superintendent have to do a self-reflection or self-assessment?
Yes.
She does?
Yeah.
Does she have to provide evidence of whatever she claims herself to be? So she claims herself to be effective, right? That's one of the languages. Does she have to provide evidence of that effectiveness?
Yes, and what she has set up is, um, very detailed and very, like, she's holding herself to an account. I, I, I saw what was available previously. It's leaps and bounds of any of that. Um, I'm not sure when all that will be available, um, but that will also be short shipped with the joint board.
Okay.
Um, but it's, um...
And that gets shared in non-public with the joint board, but I do believe we have access to a document that she's updating live that will tell us like what goals she's already accomplished and kind of, uh, but I think that's in our shared, um, documents.
Yeah, so it's, um, she's doing a very good job of trying to hold, held, hold herself accountable. Set up to where she can have metrics to back it up too, so. Alright, um, we had our meeting last week. Um... And I think that was about it. It was really, the main thing was we discussed the survey and everybody was very happy with it, so. Alright. Uh, Tiffany, we've got some policies.
Yes, we do. Um, where is the principal's report going on here?
So I can go after it. I just realized it wasn't on there.
Well, what's weird is I saw an update of what you were presenting today and I was like, well, I'm looking forward to that, but the one I printed out, it is not on here.
Yeah, I don't know why.
So, alright, let me shift my papers here. Okay, so first I'm gonna go over the policies that, um, I should have presented in January. So I'm sorry, guys, I wasn't feeling good. So this is quite a few policies tonight. But there is no meeting for February, so in March, there may not be any policies unless something comes up or we schedule to meet. But there's nothing scheduled as of right now.
You mean we don't have the pol- policy talk for my last meeting?
Well, we wait, will you be, will you be here for the last meeting?
Yes, because it's the day before voting day.
Oh, okay. Alright, I thought this was your last meeting, Andy.
Nope, give me one more time.
Alright, so that's good, one more time that I don't have to be the chair. Alright, CHCA policy, um, this is approval of handbooks. This policy is being revised to ensure clarity about who is responsible for handbook development and that the district shall conform to board policies. Since most of the handbooks are reviewed, redesigned during the summer, it is not always possible to obtain board approval for the handbooks, though the and/or in the last sentence remains. So this is just basically saying that it's, you know, created by the SAU, but board members can have input if they so desire. And we can always review that handbook too as well. Policy JH, attendance intruency. The attendance intruency policy is being revised to allow a more effective and efficient protocol of reporting and tracking student absences. This update will allow administrations to focus on those students with chronic absenteeism in order to provide the most appropriate support for attendance in schools. In addition, this policy is now the same across SAU 16 to ensure families have consistent practices across school. And then the policy up for removal would be JHR, which is student absences and excuses rules. And so all the necessary content is included in revised policy JH. So that policy was like a huge change and I think for the better. Uh, basically, right now, a parent, all you have to do is call in and say, you know, my kid is out sick and that's an excused absence. So basically, the only time that it's not excused is if like the parent doesn't call or doesn't inform. And, yeah, it just streamlines the process. Like now we're all in line with the middle school and high school too. So if you have kids across the district, it's the same policy.
So that JHR is listed under KEC right now? Should that have been listed under item two?
Oh, um, I, let me pull up the agenda because I am going off of... Yeah, it might have gotten shifted around when she put it in there.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, but I'd like to chunk it out and just do the policies for January and pass them and then do the ones for February if that works for you guys.
That's fine, whatever you would like.
So do you guys have any questions on those three?
Nope.
Yeah, my understanding is that for it to be excused, there needs like a, a doctor's absence, there needs to be a note that comes back.
Nope.
No?
Nope, nope. So basically now the way the policy is written is you'd have to be out for an extended amount. The student would have to be out for an extended amount of time. And the SAU may request information pertaining to the student's absence, which may look like a doctor's note or such. So right now, you know, it, things are just different and this just streamlines the process and it just makes it a little easier for families. Yeah.
So, uh, abstinence are excused up until a certain point?
Yes, you are allowed, um, ten half days or five full days. Is how truancy is defined.
It, it makes it really challenging on our end to, to, to really track excused versus unexcused because all it takes is a parent to say, my kid is sick.
Yep.
And, um, so for reporting purposes to the state, you know, it, it, it makes it really difficult to know if it's really that or if it's something else.
Yeah, so it's just, it's really streamlined and much, much easier just to be able to, um, you know, call in. So I was really happy with the improvements on that.
I know I should know this, but how many days, how many days is a child allowed absences before they don't fulfill the requirements?
That's just what I was gonna ask.
Before they don't fulfill the requirements?
Like for curriculum-wise or instruction-wise, right? So like how many, like if they're absent eighty days for whatever reason, excused or unexcused, are they, and have not fulfilled their curriculum requirements, what happens?
Um, then they would be truant. And so there's state laws around truancy and so that is after five days, unexcused absences. Um, all successive unexcused absences will be documented as truant. And so I think, you know, it's a good way to be able to track it, like Brandon said. And that's when, you know, they, an administration might step in and be like, okay, you know, what does this kid owe need to get to school? And are there any roadblocks in that student getting to school and stuff? So that's when it would go to the administration, yeah.
Okay.
Do they ever show them they're going to be held back?
We take those at a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, okay. Did you?
Yes, Nancy, yes.
Are they ever held back because they haven't fulfilled the days? Because it's different if you have, say you have rheumatic fever or some, some long-term illness. I presume then they would be tutored in the home.
Correct, if there's a medical.
So they would be fulfilling the requirements then because it would be a known diagnosed.
Yes.
Thing, whatever the reason, but if it was sporadic absenteeism, I mean, you do get people who say, well, um, well, maybe not in East Kingston, but you know, I needed to go to the doctors with my mother to translate, you know, and they don't go to school for that reason. Do they say to the parents, if they don't show up for school, they're gonna be held back because they haven't?
We don't say those words. It's, it's, like I said, it's, it's more of a case-by-case basis. Students are retained, but it's, 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 it's not common to retain a student. Luckily here, we, we really don't have that problem.
No.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the revisions of policy CHCA, JH, and to remove policy JH dash R.
Excuse me, while I'm on a roll, can I just ask you, if, if a student doesn't fulfill the basic requirements for that year, are they held back? Are they ever held back or are they just passed around to the next grade even though they haven't met the requirements? There must be some children who don't meet the requirements because the result would hurt them.
Typically, students are not held back.
On, for any reason?
It's, it depends on the individual student and the conversations with families.
Alright, do I have a second on that policy?
Oh, yes, second.
All in favor?
Okay, so for policies for February for this budget. We have IHBBA, which is limited English proficiency instruction. This policy is an update, uh, in accordance to federal and the federal law in the Civil Rights Act of 1964. This policy ensures assessment, instruction, and exit criteria processes for students with limited English proficiency um, are implemented within the school district. IHBG Home Education Instruction, the NHSBA revised this policy to reflect passage of House Bill 1663 of 2022. The passage of this bill specifically reflects requirements of resident districts and home education families. So policy JJJ goes along with that one and, uh, with those, the passage of House Bill 1663. So this is a new policy to address that. The NHSBA provides sample policy JJJ that was substantially revised in conjunction with revisions to previously mentioned IHBG to better coordinate the equal access provisions relating to home educated and other non-enrolled district students. Participation in public school district courses, programs, and activities as required under law. In addition to comprehensive revisions to the text of JJJ, the policy category was changed from recommended to priority slash required by law to reflect the 2022 passage of House Bill 1663. KEC, uh, public reconsideration of library materials for formerly public complaints about the curriculum and/or instruction materials. So policy KEC is being revised for alignment and clarity between instructional materials and library resources. Policy approved, policies approved last year, IJ and IJE go together for course material selection and parental objections. Policy KEC and IJL go together for library material. IJL reflects the selection and removal process of library material. KEC provides clarification and steps on public reconsideration of library materials. SAU 16 library media specialists were engaged in the proposed revisions to this policy. And then we will have three policies up for withdrawal. That'd be KECR1, request for reconsideration of instructional library resources. KECR2, report on reconsideration of library instructional materials. And then we have one out there that we don't need, which is LEB, and that's advanced coursework, advanced placement courses. And so LEB is not needed at the elementary level as it relates to advanced coursework at the high school. So we'll, um, make a motion to take that out. So I just, a few notes that I have on IHBG Home Education Instructions. Our former policy basically stated that our courses would first go to full-time enrolled students versus homeschool students, and now everyone is equal. So that verbiage was not in line with the new changes to House Bill, uh, with House Bill 1663. So that's a more urgent one. And that's, uh, addressed in policy JJJ. And then the library materials. The forms for, uh, removal, we're trying not to put like forms in a policy as a policy because the forms can change and then we would have to constantly be going back and updating. So, uh, basically right now in that policy, if you want to do a public reconsideration of library materials, you'd reach out to Brandon for that, and that's what the policy states, or a designee. And I've also been told... And I've also been told, too, that that form for public reconsideration will be put on the librarian's like website under like our school's library media specialist like column. Yeah, so I don't know if you have any other questions on those. And I do believe, too, the form, uh, request for reconsideration form was being updated, too. And so I'm not sure if that process is a hundred percent complete yet.
I don't, I haven't gotten any word that it has yet.
Oh, you haven't, okay, so it's not.
With the updated form, I, I haven't.
You haven't seen it yet?
Yep.
Okay.
I can tell now when you, when you've got something.
So, you know, for elementary school, if you have, you disagree about a book that's in the library, you go and talk to Brandon. Like, that's a, that's a very natural process, you have a conversation about it. I'm just thinking of, um, kids as they move into middle school and, um, high school. It, I'm assuming it's the same process, you would go and talk, there's a form?
It's more than just that, it's, it's a whole, um, uh, it's a whole process with, you know, the first conversation is with me, fill out the form. There is a team of stakeholders that meet and review, um, the paperwork, uh, the reason, review the materials, the book, whatever it is, and come to a decision on whether to remove or to keep. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a very thorough, uh, process. I, I think it started last year, if I, we haven't had to deal with it yet, but, um.
Right, it's usually, it's usually at the, at the high school level, we handle that.
Yeah.
So I was just curious, you know, I think that there should be a process for that, right? Do they have particular, in that group that does review it, is there a particular, um, I'm gonna use the word checklist or criteria that they look for so that everyone has, has agency and equity over what's being talked about?
Yes.
And is the parent or whoever is giving the form or requesting the review invited to that meeting?
I don't know if they're invited to that meeting itself. There are parents that are on the committee.
Oh, okay.
I, I can share with you.
Yeah, I'm just curious what the process is, as long as there are, there's representation of us.
Representation for stakeholders, yeah.
Yeah, and we went through this, um, I had a bunch of questions and I, so the form, the policy, the report on reconsideration of instructional library resources is up online right now until we decide to take it down. But basically, it's saying the reconsideration committee members is a chairperson, building-level administrator, teaching representative, certified librarian, community representative, student representative, I don't know that we would do that here, and another representative. And, you know, it does have like criteria, criteria that the, the group would look over. And then when the person fills out the request form, which I haven't seen the new request form, but basically, they could reach out to Brandon and Brandon would email them the request form, but it has, uh, questions, you know, what brought this resource to your attention? Have you examined, read, you listened to the entire resource?
Sure, and that, that's great. I'm, I'm just looking for representation and the ability to communicate the whys, that's all, yeah. Perfect, thanks.
Yeah, and then the, in the policy, too, it is still outlined that it would go, you'd bring the request to Brandon first, and then that would go to the superintendent. And then at that point, after the superintendent, it would come to the board for a decision, depending on, you know, how those other steps before go. So it is, um, Brandon, the superintendent, and then the school board, yeah, so it's written in there. You're welcome. So if there are no further questions, I'll make the motion to approve policy IHBBA, policy IHBG, policy JJJ, policy KEC, and to remove policy KECR one, KECR two, and policy LEB.
Second?
All in favor? All right. All right. Safety and security, next meeting is February twenty-second. That's my update.
Nice.
Haven't had anything since then. Why don't we put you before goal updates? All right. And in fact, actually, Lev, you go now, and then you can do wellness and everything.
Okay.
Because yours is.
All right, as Molly said, um, we're, we're officially booked for our fifth graders going over to El Nova the week of, uh, May twentieth through the twenty-third. And, um, uh, something that we do here, which I think we'll, we'll reflect on, one of the financials coming up, but, I take care of all the food ordering and then we're, we're reimbursed for that. So that'll be something coming up. But it's been, it's been a great tradition and our fifth graders are looking forward to it. Facilities update, uh, we're still on board for, uh, the April roof completion. He was here, uh, the gentleman was here last week just to go over things again. So barring any weather issues or anything like that, we are scheduled for that, um, for the April break, uh, to have that completed. And then the other thing I, I wanted to talk about was, um, since we received that promising futures grant, we've had the furniture, you know, over the last couple of months or month, um, basically, everything is here. And now we have an excess of furniture that we don't have any place to store it. Uh, some of it's extremely old, um, but some of it is still in okay condition. So we're looking for, um, I guess, permission to, um, not even sell it, I don't think it's sellable, but give it to nonprofits or people that could really use it. And I, I, there is a policy, I know, um, that, uh, Molly, you can please jump in here, too, because I've never had to, I've never had to do this before. Policy DFF, uh, district no material, shall not be disposed of until permission has been received from the building administrator, who shall determine whether the material involved has value. I don't think any of it has value, or very little, if, you know, if it did. It's basically some old, older desks and chairs, uh, that have been here for a really long time. So if, if we were able to give some of that, uh, to some kind of nonprofit, is that?
I think that's, I think the intention of that policy is, um, well, for accounting purposes, like we, we buy things, we expense it in the year that it's bought, but like, say you bought a tractor, the, the auditors would depreciate that on one section of the financial statements, but there's like two, two methods of accounting, and what, what we operate is like the cash basis that determines the fund balance and the tax rate, but the auditors have a different set that has depreciation and all that stuff. This would be like if we bought a tractor and sold it the next year, we'd have to write off the depreciation, that type of stuff.
So, so in this case?
I think you'd be fine in this case.
Okay, and is there, um, is there anything against putting it like on a Facebook Marketplace type thing?
No, but if you do get money for it, I don't know if you're doing free.
Free, it'd be free, I mean, we.
Just need to admit, you do get money for it, if you're giving away an asset that was bought by the district, then money would have to go as revenue to the district.
Correct, yeah. Okay.
So it's all like kids, like lower level stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, like, would we, would you check with the library first?
Uh, yeah, I, I would check with other schools in the SAU.
Library?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
You might even want, as much as desks are like, individual desks are becoming kind of obsolete right now, if you look at learning environments and how kids are learning, but even, um, going up to Manchester, like the YMCA or shelters or places like that, where they could create little work sessions, um, that might be something.
Okay, all right, great. Um, our enrollment numbers, um, nineteen kindergarten, twenty-three first grade, twenty-three second grade, eleven third grade, uh, twenty-one fourth grade, eighteen and fifth grade, total of one fifteen. We just recently completed our winter benchmarking here at school and, um, uh, the winter benchmarking is a little bit different than what we see in the fall and than what we see in the spring. This is, is, is really more for intervention purposes and for, uh, for our Acadient's benchmarking. We only, um, we only assessed, uh, the students that were either, uh, the yellow or the red in the fall or on the I-Ready, we assessed those students using Acadients as well. Acadients was the one-on-one assessment with either Mrs. Taton or Mrs. Schuster. So the, the numbers are, are, you'll see the graph, it's not a hundred percent accurate, because not every student was assessed. So what we did, just for the board purposes, was we took those students that were green in the fall, we just kept them green for, for this graph. Uh, I-Ready, uh, and, and also, our kindergarteners did not take Acadients in the fall, they did in the winter. So it looks much different for Acadients than it did. But again, this was really used for, uh, our interventions, uh, through our MTSS process. I, the I-Ready scores, um, every student first to fifth grade took those, no matter, no matter what they did in the fall. Every, every kid took those. A kindergarten does not and has never taken I-Ready. So I'm gonna put it up on the board, or, oh. On the screen for you to take a quick look at.
Did he just, kindergarten doesn't take I-Ready?
No.
Okay.
They do not?
Yeah.
Okay.
You should probably need the camera, so it's like on the presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't you just have it up?
What's that?
Didn't you just have it up?
Uh, no, I just had that up.
Oh, oh.
Uh, but the HDMI cord that I need to plug in there is no, is not over there. So, I'll just, um, show you from here. So this was our, uh, reading I-Ready, and it's got both the fall and the, um.
Do you guys wanna see this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's not gonna be up on the screen.
It's not working up on the screen, so.
Yeah. You wanna, you wanna grab a couple of chairs?
Come sit down.
So this was, uh, the I-Ready reading screener that we did, uh, in the fall and in, and, uh, in the month of, of January. And like we talked about, the, the, um, the I-Ready measures, phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary, comprehension of informational text, and comprehension of literature. And as we talked about, we're gonna see more yellow in the fall. And as the year goes on, we wanna see, uh, much less yellow, much less red, and more green, which is kind of the, the trajectory that we were hoping to see. As you can see, in the fall, we had seventy, seventy percent of our first to fifth graders, uh, were, were two or more grade levels below. And as we moved into the winter, that dropped to eight percent. Same thing with our, uh, students in the yellow that are about a grade level behind. Forty-nine percent of our students, um, were in the yellow in the fall and now forty-four percent of our students are in the yellow, uh, as we did this in the, in the winter. And then the nice jump from, from thirty-three percent of our students in the green is now up to forty-seven percent. And again, we expect to see this going up again as we get into, uh, the spring assessment. The next one is the Acadients, and that's what I was talking about. This one was a little more difficult to put on here because, um, because what we just talked about with, uh, only our students that were in the yellow or the red in the fall, um, I took this, or students that were in the yellow or the red when they took the I-Ready. So right now, um, it's not a hundred percent accurate, but I just wanted to give you a little bit, uh, a picture of, you know, kind of where we'll get. You know, we had the nice, um, we had the nice, uh, drop from twenty-nine percent of our students in, in the fall, in the yellow, to twenty-two percent, and we, we moved up, um, it'll be much more accurate in the spring, you know? It'll have all of our students in there that, that took it in the fall and in the spring.
Doesn't look like you had a lot of movement with the red, but your kiddos in the yellow moved to green.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
And, um, this, for the first time, has kindergarten in here. They were not in the, in the fall. So we don't really know how that, that made our
Okay.
red look. Okay? Uh, but Acadients measures, um, phonological awareness, letter naming, and letter sound naming, nonsense word fluency, oral reading fluency and comprehension. The I-Ready math, uh, looks, looks much better than it did, um, from the fall. And, um, you know, we, we've, we have, like, we talked about, I think, back in the fall, maybe we talked about math and how we're really gonna start taking a harder look at that, and this is just kind of the beginning of that. So we're really excited to see, uh, such, such nice, such nice movement across the board. Uh, nine percent of our students were in the red in the fall, and now that has dropped to, uh, five percent. The big, the big jump was from our students in the yellow, seventy-eight percent, is down to forty-nine percent in the yellow. And, uh, the big jump from twelve percent, uh, in the fall, that were in the green, that were on grade level, is now, uh, thirty, uh, forty-five percent. So really nice jump there. Uh, this measures numbers and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement and data and geometry. And, any questions?
That's one through five?
This is one through five, yep, yep.
Did you see a leap in a particular grade over the last, like, you know, what, and what I mean by that? They go from second and they go to third, we're, we're starting to move from concrete to abstract, right? So is there, is there a place where, like, you're seeing it connect, like, all the dots connecting?
I can't tell you which grade level it is, if it is, or if it's across the board. It's something we're talking about on our data dives, yeah, yeah. Uh, and again, you know, same thing with the Acadients, although we did see some nice growth there, um, it's not, it's not completely accurate because of, of, you know, the reasons we talked, but, um, we're, we're definitely seeing less red, which is good, especially in the math area, and it was very similar with I-Ready, too. So that, that kind of matched up with the red, um, you know, students that were two or more grade levels below, showing significant progress there. Uh, this measures early math skills, computation, and concepts and applications. And again, first, I'm sorry, kindergarten took this for the first time also.
My apologies.
Dr. Bennett?
I had forgotten Andy had moved it to four thirty.
I think that was Brandon.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Eddie, uh, so, again, this is just what we're gonna continue to do. And in class, we're still using the in-class measures of aggrity and phonological awareness for reading, the past assessments, uh, Orton-Gillingham screeners, uh, our SAS modulars that they're using in third, fourth, and fifth grade, uh, which is not only giving them progress monitoring, but also practice testing for the SAS testing that's coming up. Uh, I-Ready math quizzes and unit assessments, performance-based assessments, and, uh, the in-class oral reading fluency. And we're continuing to work with Jill Lazzie, our curriculum director, every Friday. We're doing a lot of, a lot of great work, K through two, three through five, bringing it all together as a whole school. Things are going really well, um, with the new setup we have this year on Fridays. And we're, our teachers are getting so much out of the collaboration and work together for the first time in a really long time. So we're, we're really moving in a positive direction.
What are you doing on Fridays? Did I miss some things?
Uh, Fridays, we have, uh, PLC times that, um, we moved from more of a grade level PLC from the past many years to, um, a K-two PLC and a three-five PLC. Jill Lazzier is here every Friday, uh, working with our curriculum and assessment team on the first Friday of the month, and then, uh, the next two Fridays is either the K-two or the three-five. And we're looking at data. Mrs. Schuster and Mrs. Taton are also taking time during, um, teacher's planning blocks, um, when they have that, that sixth block, um, that they have a week. And they're, they're, they're looking, they're really being strategic about the data and making it more individualized than they are in the larger group.
Are, are Ms. Schuster and Ms. Taton actually co-planning and data diving with the actual classroom teachers?
Yes.
That makes my heart happy.
Yeah, so I'm really excited for the kids, because more kids are proficient right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's awesome.
That's good.
And I think that, obviously, that's really gonna show when they go out to do the state testing, come in the spring, those numbers are gonna come back in the fall higher.
Yeah.
Because more kids are proficient, so I just, I'm excited for the kids and for the parents and the community that they're really catching on the numbers of between the two grades. really catching on the numbers between the two grade levels below and the one grade level below, to see more of them on grade level is awesome.
Yeah. Right.
Well, that, all that's part of the strategic planning, like being, becoming extremely intentional in what they're teaching. Yep. My question is, the kiddos on IEPs, when they take iReady, right, and they take the Acadients, that's independently, they, or do they have to follow their accommodations on the IEPs?
Yes.
For example, if a kiddo has, if they're doing math reading problems and the kiddo in their IEP has to have the math reading problem read to them, will that happen when they're taking their iReady test?
Yes.
So they're actually getting their accommodations? So we should also see some trending in that space, too?
The good thing about Acadients in particular is it's, you know, it's, it's teacher-directed, it's not on the computer. So the teachers can read them the math problem.
If that accommodation is, is there, right? Because that's the access, right, we want them to have?
Yep. And iReady will read it to them too, right?
Yes.
If they have that accommodation too. Yeah, so just on Acadients, you're saying that the kindergarteners is the first time taking like an official math or reading test?
Yeah.
Okay. And do they have any way to prepare for that, or do they just administer it? Yeah, they should do their little iPads and they go for it.
It's not even iPads, it's, it's, it's pen and paper.
Oh, it's pen and paper, that one.
Yeah.
So Acadients is not on the computer?
Uh, some parts of it are for, for, for the lower grade levels, it's...
Okay.
One-on-one with the teacher and, yeah.
Okay.
As they get older, they do it on the computer?
Okay.
The little ones do it on paper.
Paper. Okay, cool. So it's definitely, like, accurate?
Yeah.
Yep.
As far as their attention goes.
Yep.
Oh, I almost said...
All right. So could you email that to me again?
Uh, the presentation?
Yeah, yeah, just the numbers, or, yeah, that would be great.
Um, wellness, was supposed to meet last week, they were meeting this week, and I can't unfortunately go because I am at a conference and not able to attend. So I will get the agenda and look through all the notes and report back next time. You want me to do my next one? No?
Yeah, just go on.
Oh, okay. My goal, engagement committee, we submitted the playground grant.
Playground grant?
Yeah, for the outside classroom, the King Fisher Community Park. We are still waiting to hear about the grant, we have not received any word yet. We have, the grant is up to $25,000 that can help refurbish what's out back there. We are looking at something called the walking curriculum, which is stations-based, so they'll, can be up to 13 stations where Brandon, myself, teachers, community members can show some expertise, anywhere from photography to the history of New Hampshire. We can come up with what the community wants to look at. One of the pieces Brandon and I in the committee talked about was utilizing SST and looking at the career paths that we could use SST as showing off the trades and different pathways that the trades allow kids, and having high school kids here mentoring our K through five kiddos in that space. So we've talked to the director at SST, and she's on board. We're at the point now of, of seeing what the availability is of all of these programs, such as contracting, welding, catering, their careers in education, the business and marketing programs. So we're hoping to do a really full, all-encompassing plug for all career pathways, which is really part of our New Hampshire curriculum also. So we're, we're moving forward, it's slow, we really need to wait for the grant to go through. Zoe Susi put a great presentation together, we submitted it to the grants, so we are definitely in line with what they are looking for. And so, fingers crossed that we, we get it and we get the 25 grand. That's what I'm hoping for. Go big or go home.
Yeah, that's right.
Good job. All right. Tiffany, why don't you go?
Um, yeah, I don't think I really have anything further to add other than what Brandon presented and just what I said, that it seems like the kids are doing really well and making some good academic gains.
Yeah. And then for mine, the roof would be the, the only thing that we got going. On that note, Molly, since you're still, when do we need to request the funds for the roof, if we're gonna do that from a trust?
Um, so, when are, is it, has it been done yet?
After, is it done?
April break. Schedule April break.
Typically, what we would do is after it's done, take the final invoice and then bring it to the trust.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. So that will be up to you guys.
Because, I mean, you could do it before, but then you don't know exactly how much...
No, 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 that's...
Whereas, yeah, whereas you have the final invoice, then you...
I just wanted it.
You can't back out once you take it out.
Yeah, it's, it's fine.
Should be doing that in May.
So, all right. Um, a new business, we already went over the 360 evaluation tool, and then we have something to discuss in non-public. I guess before we do that, is there anything else, old business or anything, any input?
I just was disappointed today. When I called the school, there's nobody answered the phone, no message. You know, the website says it's a traditional snow day. What does traditional snow day mean when you've got a meeting, you know, a school board meeting that night? To me, there should have been a message on the recorder in the school that said, "No school today, but there will be a school board meeting." I don't know if anybody else figured, well, there's, there's no school, I won't go to the school board meeting, but it just wasn't handled the way I would like to have seen it.
There's nobody in, in the school. The custodians here, that's it.
But you have a recorder going, somebody could have...
It's, it's a voicemail. It's, it's someone would have to come into the school and make a recording on the voicemail to do that.
Well, how...
Yeah.
If, if you call the school and you got no answer like this, I just figured, well, the building's closed for the day.
On the website...
I think that's a logical conclusion.
On the website, would it, would it have said that the board meeting is canceled?
Yeah, it would have been posted. And board meetings are only canceled by the school board chair, and that they don't follow the same, they don't go with school, just because schools cancel first snow day, that doesn't mean a, a school board meeting is only canceled if the school board chair decides to cancel it. And then that would have been announcements made. So they're really, 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 really ever postponed.
We have that as a policy, I've never come across.
That's just the, the regs that govern school board meetings. They don't follow, the superintendent can call a snow day, but they cannot cancel each school board meeting without speaking to the school board chair as the, the state regs talk about the way school boards do governing. So...
Okay, well, if you could just send me that policy...
Yeah, I can look up the state regs, or I can point you to the website to look up the state, the state regs around school board rules. So just for future reference, unless there's a notice that goes out or a posting, school board meetings are not postponed. They can't be canceled, but they can be moved for weather, but that would be something that would be pushed out if, if the weather was that bad.
I, I would have emailed you had we postponed it too, because I know that you're typically interested.
Yeah, I think about, you know, Andy, I'm sure you would have, but I'm thinking about some of the people that just, you know, occasionally come.
Yeah.
You know, if you really, when you call the school and you get no answer, you just figure that's it. I was very surprised, to be honest with you, when you, you know, emailed me back and said there was a meeting. I would have figured the opposite.
Yeah, I had two constituents from town reach out today, one a parent, one a Mr. Lloyd, and they both wanted to know if the meeting was still on. And, yeah, I did say it was, that I would update them at further notice, but I'm just wondering, like, how we could, you know, get that out, whether we, I don't know, how would we get that out, you know, let it still happening?
If you could, if you could put on the website that it was a snow day, then why couldn't you have just added, "But there will be a school board meeting"?
Okay, so you said you went to the website and it updated with snow date for today, and then maybe just under it, like, "School board meeting still happening at 4:30"?
Yeah, there was nothing about the school board meeting, it just said there was a traditional snow day.
Okay, okay.
We could easily, Sharon, to add that, that future reference.
Add it, okay. All right, cool. So we'll do that in the future, update the website so that you guys will know.
On communication, Carriertown is now no longer.
Yeah.
And so the, right now, I'm only going to be talking to Zoe about publicly putting up that information.
Library?
Yeah, the library.
Isn't there, isn't there something that says it needs to be in some kind of newsprint, whether it be digital or in paper?
It has to be...
We put it in Seacoast, that, that's...
Yeah, we do, we listed it in Seacoast.
It has to be in newsprint, I think.
Yeah.
It came up before a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I remember talking, really talking about it.
Well, I think the Eagle Tribune is taking over for the Carriertown, and I guess supposedly they're gonna have a little section for like Seacoast, you know, things that we normally would have seen, so I wonder if we'll have to put it in there?
I just wanna clarify one thing. What we do for Carriertown and the newsletters does not, is not what we use to legally post.
Okay, so who does the legal posts?
The SAU office. And I believe, I believe it's Seacoast online.
That's correct. Okay, so I don't have to do that?
No, that comes right out of there. Doctor Esbel sends that all to Seacoast online.
Okay.
Yeah, so, just...
Continue with Zoe.
Yeah, continue with Zoe. That, that's, that's us...
Seacoast online? What about the people that don't have computers?
I think this came up before.
Yeah, this has came, this has come up before, and it's determined that that's legally, that's our best option to get it out there. We do more than that to try to make sure that everybody's aware of anything, Zoe, it was Carriertown before.
Yeah.
You, you kept your word, you know, Carriertown news, everything was good, but going forward here to have an online...
Well, it, I mean, we've, we've always done Seacoast online.
It is...
So that, that's never changed. Carriertown's going away, maybe we try to find something, you know...
Yeah, like the Eagle Tribune that's taking over.
In the future.
It's age discrimination, for crying out loud. The people that don't have computers are my age.
Well, the, the newsletter's printed, right? Right at the library?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, so, so we will continue to do that.
Yes.
I thought town, town events, I had, were posted at the library, at the town hall, and at the post office.
And they're posted in the SAU office?
Yeah.
They are, they are posted up around town as well, the paper?
Yeah.
Schedule this.
I don't know who posted.
Yep.
But it was in those three.
I believe the office communicates with the town directly on that. So, but as a board, we've, specifically the, the, the library newsletter, I think, is probably the most accessible to everybody. Because not only is it, is it online, it's also, they, they print it out to everybody available. So...
So as we learn more, we'll...
Yeah, I think if we, if we ask our friends and neighbors if they've subscribed to the Eagle Tribune, then maybe that would be worth, I mean, if no one's going to be getting it, I don't see the point, but if they are, then maybe that's where we go.
The library may even get the Eagle Tribune, I'm not sure.
No, they don't.
They don't. Maybe they would if we asked them to.
Does the Exeter newsletter still publish a couple times a week?
I didn't even know there was one.
I think that's online only, too.
It's only online now.
I think it is online only, yeah.
Yeah.
I know the library used to get the...
Yeah, I, I think the best printed thing for local really is the newsletter that's run through the library. And we've been very consistent about keeping that one updated. Trying to be very consistent.
Trying to be very consistent.
They do try and list all meetings in town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, all right. So in that case, I think we need to go to pub, non-public. So we're gonna go into non-public, per RSA 91A32, section I through, A through I.
We're gonna go under I.
And we're gonna go under I.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Thank you for coming.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to expend up to $12,000 for the security issue that we just discussed.